We're hereby having a regular meeting of Commissioners Court of Grimes County, Texas. It is nine o'clock. Calling the meeting to order, I'm going to ask that if you would please rise for the invocation. That will be led by David Patrick and then remain standing for the pledges to the U.S. and the Texas flag.
Father, thank you for allowing the blessed privilege of gathering to do business. We ask your grace on us. We ask your blessing on all our local law enforcement, first responders. We thank you for the many blessings that you give us and we ask your blessing on these activities today in your name. Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Would you be seated, please? It's now time for our public comments. If you do have any public comments, we'd ask that you come to the podium, that you state your name clearly and speak what's on your mind. You have up to two minutes. Please don't all of you rush at one time. Yes, sir.
Judge Commissioners, my name is Neil Windley. I'm the newly appointed city manager in Cobb Mission. I just wanted to reach out and express our appreciation for all the work y'all are doing with the ambulance services and we just want to put out there that we are interested in discussing with the county providing an additional ambulance station. If that's something that will be helpful in the future to help increase or decrease response time in the area. We have a lot of expansion coming to the area. We're working with several developers right now and there's going to be very fast growth coming, especially with 249 coming through and we just want to make sure that we're ahead of it and offer anything that we can do to help and get that ambulance station in there and maybe put some call times down. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much and welcome to Position and the County.
You heard that city manager? That county manager?
Position, oh. Sir, do you have a public comment you'd like to make? Again?
Sorry, did I say something else? Two minutes to two minutes.
Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll move to consent agenda items number three and number four. Number three, consider and take action to approve payroll. Consent agenda item number four, consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of bills and claims. Those have been submitted to us. We've had time to review. Any discussion, Commissioners?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve consent agenda items three and four. Second.
There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox to approve consent agenda items number three and four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We will go to agenda item number five, Emergency Management Subdivision Coordinator, Mr. David Lilly. Agenda item number five, consider and take action to approve the replat of King Oak subdivision, section one, that combines lot 195, 1.32 acres, and lot 196, 1.19 acres into a single lot to be redesigned designated as lot 196R 2.51 acres. Mr. Lilly.
Yes, Judge and Commissioners, again, this is one of our standard replats for King Oaks where the property owner has two adjacent lots and they are now getting ready to build, so they're combining the lots into one and removing the center line. And the reason this is coming before you is because it is in a platted subdivision, so any change to that plat requires a replat. So I do not see any problems with the redesignation, the way it's laid out. The resulting lot will have clear access on Dillon and Caster Drive and there are no other issues with this that I can see.
We've got a public hearing this morning at 8:30 and there were no negative comments in regards to this. Commissioner Mallett, this is in your precinct. Do you care to make a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve the replat of King Oak subdivision, section one, combining lot 195 and lot 196 into lot 196R.
I second the motion.
There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski to approve agenda item number five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Mr. Lilly, your agenda item number six, consider and take action to approve the replat of King Oak subdivision, section two, that combines lot 294, 1.87 acres, and lot 295, 1.1, 1.81 acres into a single lot to be redesignated as lot 294R to a total of 3.68 acres.
Again, just as we just discussed with the previous plat, this is the same type of plat. This is in a different section of King Oaks. This one is in section two and with the same circumstance, the property owners are getting ready to build on their lots and they are combining the lots into one large lot and there is, both of them had clear access on the St. John Drive and of course, the resulting lot will have the same. So I don't see any other issues, have no concerns with how they're proposing to combine this lot.
And we had a public hearing this morning at 8:45 regarding this request and we heard no negative comments.
No comments.
There's no further discussion. I move to approve the replat of King Oak subdivision, section two, that combines lot 294 and lot 295, redesignated as lot 294R.
Second motion.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number six by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly. And we need to sign those before you get out of here today.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Agenda item number seven, Commissioner Dobianski, we want to recognize Jan Pesco for her five years. Is Ms. Pesco here?
Yes.
Oh, there she is. Congratulations and thank you for your service.
I appreciate it. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Did you get a picture, Mary? Okay.
Judge Corrigan's house is here. Judge Corrigan.
Oh. Judge Corrigan, thank you.
Thank you.
You're hiding behind Mr.?
Well, I made sure she made it out here.
All right. Bring her down with lights and sirens?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you and congratulations, both of you. We'll go to agenda item number eight, Grimes County Animal Shelter, 501(c), President Chairman Kristen Keely. Ms. Keely, good morning.
Good morning.
We're moving along, aren't we?
We are.
Okay.
I was here not too long ago to discuss a potential lease agreement with y'all. I'm back because we do have a final agreement that's been deemed acceptable on Mr. Folds. So at this time, I'd like to go ahead and review it and we're actually looking for approval at this time.
That is our attachment number eight.
Yes, sir.
I understand y'all have an attorney on your board?
Yes, sir, we do.
So did we have dueling attorneys on the language and everything?
There was no dueling, that's what you're asking.
What was my guard's answer?
It was a mutual, everything was good, right?
Yes, we put our revolvers away.
Okay.
I do have a question, Ms. Folds.
It was your pins that I was concerned about. Commissioner?
I was going to ask, Ms. Folds, it is a 10-year agreement?
This is very similar to, we used the pattern for the Lions Club building where Lions Club was going to build a facility on county property and once that's done, it becomes a fixture, it takes on the nature of the dirt. And so it's the same with this, is when they, when it's constructed, it will take on the nature of the dirt. It will be county property. In the Lions Club agreement, though, I recognize that there was no term on it and that was done intentionally, but it just seems to me there should at least be some time where we come back to the table and discuss where things are. This agreement provides that should they cease operations as an animal shelter rescue, rescue slash shelter, if they stop operations, this lease goes away. Short of that, though, it has a 10-year term and the idea, I think, would be meet at 10 years and discuss where things are and where things are headed at that point. This is, as you know, Commissioner, this is to provide a service for the county, so I think it's somewhat symbiotic and I don't, you know, it's not, and that's why I said that about the lawyer. Mr. Brunz has been in the county for some period of time. I met him before he got interested in this endeavor and he and I have talked about this lease and he's made proposals and I've made proposals and it's not been any disagreement, I don't think, about the terms of it.
Is that it, your question, Commissioner?
It is. And it says the term shall commence upon the substantial completion of construction of the animal shelter. Do we have maybe an idea of when that is going to start?
We're not sure now because we are awaiting final approval on our nonprofit status from the IRS and we get letters that say another 180 days, so we're not sure how long it will take for them to get back with us and we, excuse me, we can't start, you know, the main part of our fundraising for the facility really until we have that status. So we're waiting on that right now.
Okay.
And until we get that, we, you know, we've got to have that to move forward.
Yes, we'll have to have it. We start, we're looking to start on other items that we can begin, but we can't actually, majority of the funds, you know, we're going to need that 501(c)(3) approval before we do that.
Sure. Because people want to write off, right? Yes.
And rightfully so.
And it's constructed to house approximately 30 to 40 dogs and 15 to 20 cats?
Yes, ma'am. That's what we, that's what we anticipate in our capacity to leave these.
There's no design of the building yet?
Not at the current time, no, sir.
They don't have any money. Anything takes money. They don't have.
So the location is, what appears from the map, to be in close proximity to the Sheriff's Department Training Range out there. Do you think that's going to have an impact on anything?
Actually, I asked the sheriff prior to finalizing that, kind of what he thought, he said that because of where the range runs and which direction they shoot, that should be fine. That was the closest thing I could find that was far enough away from the proposed new county buildings to not be a nuisance. And if you look on the right side of that property, there's some houses there, so we didn't want to get too close to people that are already there, so that seems to be the most feasible option. Sheriff South said that it shouldn't be a problem where it's at, that that would probably be the most convenient place to put it in light of the other improvements that we're looking to put out there.
Also, I think the drainage is probably better in that area. So it's moving the weight out of the, out of the system. Because if we put it on the other side, it's going to have to be kind of pumped. I think it'd be less pumping to put it in that area.
And the map that's attached is, the area circle is much larger than the building is going to be.
Yeah.
And it indicates it's an approximate area, so when somebody gets out there with stakes and says, "We're staking this off, these are the parameters of the building," I think everybody, I suspect that the folks of the entity won't have any problem if any of you all, the sheriff's office gets out there and says, "Oh, no, this won't work." So it's still to be hammered out. I mean, there's provision for that gray area.
Once again, I thank you for undertaking this for the citizens of Grimes County. You've been doing an excellent job and to be so young, I like that.
She's aging quickly through this project. Is that a fair statement?
A lot of good business experience.
Sir.
And dedication.
Well, and the other thing that we want to remember, that this is one of the major issues on our strategic plan that was put together by the citizens of this county, so your project, along with their desires, fit hand in hand, so we hope that one of these days we get this done. Yes, sir?
Could I, could I ask a question of the county attorney?
If you come up to the podium. If you come up to the podium and identify yourself for the court, please, sir.
My name is Dan Digg. Ms. Folds, I just wanted to clarify, this still doesn't, I am a member of the board of the Grimes County Rescue.
Right.
This still requires final approval of the plans by the Commissioners, is that, there's still one more stage they can either accept or reject?
Yes.
This plan, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And the only other thing I want to say, even though there hasn't been not very much money raised, there, as you mentioned, Judge, there is substantial support in the county and there are some contributors who have verbally committed significant amounts of funds towards this and I, I'm convinced it will be successful if we can get the grant from the property from the county, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Keely. Anything else?
That's all I have at this time, but we are, this is one of the things that we're going to need in order to move forward.
Sure. Commissioners, do you have any additional questions at this time?
I have one comment. Because I sit on the board, I'm going to abstain from voting for this. It's not that I don't support it, but I've been advised by my attorney that it would be.
Gosh, and I was going to ask you for the motion.
I would love to do it, but because of that, I'm going to abstain from voting on it.
That's understandable, okay?
And Commissioners, I have the original, there were small, some small, I think clerical issues we adjusted, so I have the original, so if you approve it, you'll hang on after the meeting, we'll get this one signed.
Does it require all of us to sign? The judges? It happens?
Yes, yes.
It's got a spot for everybody to sign. When you say require, it may have a spot there, the question is always who's authorized to sign. You're always all authorized to sign. You can give that authority to somebody in particular if you want to, but since you're all here.
Would it be okay for Commissioner Dobianski to sign it, even though he didn't vote on it, or is it something?
When he's, when you sign this, you're not saying you voted for it. You're signing to say it got approved by the court.
It's been approved.
Yeah, and if you're so mad about how the vote went, you don't have to sign it.
Well, if there's no further questions, I'd like to make the motion to approve the final lease agreement for land use and with the signatures of Commissioners Court.
Yes. Second.
There's a motion before the court on agenda number, agenda item number eight, first by Commissioner Walker, there's a second by Commissioner Cox. All in favor of approval of this agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And one abstain? Motion carries. Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to agenda item number nine, Human Resources Director Lucy Pope, consider and approve the 2018-19 renewal notice for benefits from the Texas Association of Counties we refer to as TAC. Unauthorized, the county judge has signatory. See attachment number nine. Ms. Pope?
Okay. Judge and Commissioners, it's that time again, they sent us the renewals for the 2018 and 19 health and employee benefits. And if you'll notice, medical didn't go up this year. I've been here 12 years and this is the first time they, they gave us medical at the same rate.
Can I take credit for that?
You can, you can also see that our dental did go up 3.3% and they are going to offer this year full-on medical through MD Life where our employees can call in if they feel like they, that they need some help, they can call in at a certain number and get medical assistance, so.
Not to be funny, but that's like a doctor on the phone.
Right, 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 right. They also provided us a vision this year, but our vision, we have vision through the National Vision Administration and it's a very, very good plan. I, it's up to the Commissioners Court, but to me, I don't feel like we need both, both plans because our employees are very satisfied with the vision benefit we've done now.
Judge, I can, I can testify, it has saved me a ton of money because all four of my family requires glasses on a yearly basis and sometimes glasses.
Very good plan. I don't know if y'all realize, but this year we've had two deaths and we've had 10 high-cost employ, you know, 10 of our employees have had very high-cost procedures done and I was just surprised when we got our, our renewals back that our medical stayed the same. The doctor was going to stay the same, everything is going to stay the same.
Did you compare the vision plans?
Yes, I did. I sent those to y'all and we did some, you know, we, we studied them, both of them, Donna and I both studied them to make sure, you know, if one compared to the other one and our NVA still is outstanding.
And that's something the employee pays for themselves.
Yes, it's the employee's.
And it's a choice.
It's a choice, right. Any questions?
I will admit going through it, I get lost a couple of times. That's why we depend on you and Donna.
That's what I'm here for. Now, I know that they had mentioned something about the prescription plan. We're, we're still on the prescription plan, but they're changing that a little bit, but the webinar is not until tomorrow and as soon as I get information on the prescription plan, I will definitely get them to you, the Commissioners and you, Judge, and let you be aware of what's going on. But otherwise, that, it's been a good plan. I mean, everyone is not complaining.
Will you wait to see what the plan is or will you move forward if we agree to that?
Oh, no, I will move forward because it's not going to change the medical or the dental or anything like that. It's just going to, it's going to, this webinar will just explain to us how they're going to write some of the medicines that some of our employees are taking and I'll get that to the employees when you.
So the rates, that is good news. Is that because we're grandfathered in?
Because we're grandfathered in, that's correct.
Okay.
Very good news.
Because we did have other, they did present other options.
They presented another option if you wanted to take that, but the option we're on is really, if you choose to take that other option, it's going to raise those deductibles, it's going to raise every, every, you know, your co-pays.
It does. And you're not saving a tremendous amount of money.
No, you're not.
You may only save about $20, it's a $20 difference.
That's correct.
And the deductible is an $80 difference. And recently, I had an issue with the deductible.
Oh, did you?
I did. Even being $600, you know, for a simple procedure, I said, well, just cancel it. So. And then the increase, this was 3.3%.
3.3%.
On the dental, which only took it up about 84 cents.
Right, about 84 cents.
But Judge, I think we need to stay with where we are with the grandfather clause. It is a good policy.
You want to put that in form of a motion?
I will. I'd like to make the motion that we approve the 2018-19 renewal notice for the benefits from the Texas Association of Counties, selecting to go with our current rates and authorize the county judge as our signature.
Is there a second?
A second motion.
Is there any further discussion? There's a motion before the court on agenda item number nine by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Ms. Pope, you also have agenda item number 10, consider and approve the revised law enforcement pay and overtime for the personnel policy. See attachment number 10. For clarification, it's the same policy except for the addition of the language at the bottom, is it not?
No.
Is there more to it?
You made some changes to it too, didn't you? To this policy.
Policy from all forms of hands I was going to use.
Mr. Green, I know you don't like to, but would you approach the podium so we can get you on the TV camera so your popularity can be seen around the world?
Yes, this is a, this policy was drafted in collaboration with Human Resource Department, Sheriff's Office, and the Department of Public Safety. This is actually a new policy to address some issues that the old policy had, so we had it all verified and re-done.
And I guess one of the main things that we talked about in the meeting was the idea of maybe a supervisor changing the input of the employee, but we wanted to make sure the employee was aware of those changes very soon after the change was made and agreed to it, since we're talking about their, their pay. That was correct?
Yeah, in, in a term of policy, once we do, for the employee's conscience is not correct, they have a reasonable amount of time to give it to the treasurer's office and we're going to work.
And I know we debated what a reasonable amount of time was, but we finalize it as soon as possible.
And that, this policy was sent to John C. and he, do you remember it?
It's fine with me.
Okay, yes.
I think the judge hit the nail on the head. The issue is that the treasurer's office wants to be certain that the employee has seen an opportunity, or has an opportunity to review the changes. I wouldn't make that happen. Just to me, it's an issue of practicality. This works, this works.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments for Ms. Pope?
No, Judge, I move that we approve the revised law enforcement pay and overtime for the personnel policy.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 10 by Commissioner, first by Commissioner Cox, second by Commissioner Mallett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Pope. Agenda item number 11, Road and Bridge Engineer, Mr. Harry Walker, consider and take action regarding special road use indemnity agreement for tour construction related to the Breviloa?
Breviloa.
Say again?
The Breviloa.
Breviloa.
The Breviloa.
Okay, what he said. Enterprise Pipeline Construction, see attachment number 11.
That's okay, it took me six months to get that.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This is the road use agreement that goes along with the pipeline permit that you approved, the Breviloa, which is enterprise. The name of this project has changed multiple times since we first started talking about it, but you've already approved the pipeline agreement. This is the road use agreement which we issued for construction. We have representatives, Kim Johnston for construction, super independent, and Bruce Taylor is the wideway agent for安装 and construction. Everything is in order. I've received their bond and we also, we went out, we wrote all the roads, they'd be using for access with contractor, looked at what the routing, what, what we needed to put those roads in shape for their use. And they've provided us check to pay for the county to go ahead and make improvements on those roads, similar to what we did with Center Point across Texas, to get them in shape before they even started and then, of course, we'll come back during, of course, the project and at the end, and make sure they're restored properly also. We have also reissued coverage permits for the road crossings. They have started on that work already, using light equipment, meets our standards, so a lot of activity going on. This project will move very quickly. We're hoping for two to three. Hoping for two to three months total construction time as far as the main, the heavy construction. Also, if it's simply in and out, maybe gone, which is a nice dollar. Take what that said, are there any questions? If there are, try and answer them. If not, back to you.
Commissioner Mallett, this is going through your precinct, is it not?
Yeah, the alignment basically runs from Highway 30 at the Walker County line to the northwest, leaves the county on the west side, just off the end of 106. West of Iowa. Like we have 14 road crossings in that stretch.
What side of the pipeline?
Twenty-four. Natural gas.
And you're satisfied with the agreement?
Yes, sir.
This is our standard agreement. There's no changes made other than that. The property for roads is incorrect.
And the bond amount, but your requirements and everything?
Hundred thousand dollar bond.
Any other questions or concerns? Mr. Mallett?
There's no further discussion. I move to approve the special road use indemnity agreement for Troy construction related to the Breviloba Enterprise Pipeline Construction.
You got it.
Second motion.
There is a motion before the court on agenda item number 11 by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda item number 12, Mr. Walker, that is yours also. Considering take action to authorize the sale of county-owned property on Fenthorpe Street in Anderson C., attachment number 12. It's a little 15-foot.
Yes, sir. We have been approached by a property owner on Fenthorpe Street, the owners of the new restaurant over there. There is a 15-foot wide strip of land that belongs to Grimes County. It runs adjacent to their property. It has not been used by the county for many years. There is a small concrete block building, which is not in great shape. The building actually was used previously, was an old fire station many years ago. And a recent year, there's the water company, I think, used it for a while. And a resident has been using it for four weeks since then. It's pretty much, this property has been off the radar, had not been used by the county. My recommendation is that we go ahead and proceed through the process to sell this. I'm not asking if we sell it today, we're asking for approval to go through the process. The state statutes allow for unique properties like this to be offered to the adjacent property owners rather than going through a public bidding type procedure. The attorney will help me out with this. What I understand is required is that we have to have an appraisal. We'll have to survey the property and we have to receive at least the appraised value of the property. Because this property is so small, it's not useful by itself. It's on the tax rule, is currently for $2,000. What I'm suggesting is that we definitively accept the county appraisal district's appraisal as the proper value for this property, rather than get $1,000 or whatever it costs to get it appraised specifically. And then offer it to the adjacent property owner on both sides for that appraised value, plus the cost of the survey and any other expenses that we might have if we do. The decision is to go out for appraisal, and I would add that into the cost too, because it's such an ugly dollar amount.
Right.
Some of these fees will be a significant percentage of the cost of that property.
Do you know approximately how wide?
Fifteen feet wide.
Fifteen feet wide?
The depth of that lot, which is, it runs up, actually runs up to the back of the little vacant parking lot next to the Red Hotel. It just, it doesn't go anywhere. I checked with the appraisal district back in the old, original plating of the county of Anderson. It was set aside for a fire department. That's been many, many years ago since it was used for that.
It's 15 by what?
It's, I don't remember the exact depth of the property. I would say it's about 100 feet, maybe, maybe 80.
I would say 80. I drove by it this morning.
Yeah, it's not very big.
Each property owner will have the opportunity.
The adjacent property owners would each have the opportunity. I've already talked to Mr. Weidner at the water company and made sure they had no interest in the property. They are actually shutting down that well. They have probably been going to dispose of that property themselves at some point in time in the future. But if, if they're both interested, then they can make offers on property. It doesn't particularly matter to me who it goes to. I just, I don't think it's of any benefit to the county. They could go ahead and put it back on the tax rule to be the best use of that property.
This was not a, this was never an alley or a street?
No, it's not, not part of the street system.
So I just point out for you, this is really not Harry's job. So he's done this for your benefit. This is not road and bridge. This is like a county manager, that's kind of.
This wasn't your job?
Nope, it wasn't my job either, no.
Actually, as a result of going over there and complaining to them about the improvements they were making, what they were doing to our ditches, we ended up getting into some other conversations. Something beneficial.
Should we keep the mineral rights on this?
Doubt very much. There'd be a whole lot to be produced from this. But you're certainly welcome to. I would point out to you that the overarching concern here is that, as with the sale of any county property, the property does not belong to you, it does not belong to me, in particular, it belongs to the taxpayer. And so you owe the taxpayer the obligation to get the most amount of money that you can. So the usual process for getting rid of property is through an auction, where you appoint a commissioner to run an auction. You have the alternative of doing sealed bids. But in this particular case, because it's a narrow strip of land, you can, as Mr. Walker indicated, you can simply sell based upon appraised value. He and I have had this conversation. There's not any authority that says that you can or can't use the appraisal district's valuation. But it does say you'll obtain an appraisal, which seems to suggest it's not one you already have. I'm okay with supporting your decision about whichever direction you choose to go. I agree with Mr. Walker. I think that if you add that cost, this appraisal, if I had to guess, is going to run you between 500 and 1,000 bucks. That should be a cost that's passed on to the buyer, as well as the survey. But then you run the, run the risk that maybe you don't have a buyer that wants to pay, you know, that additional cost. So it's for you to decide as a policy issue. And I pointed out that this is not really Harry's deal. It's because it could have come to any one of you. It certainly could have come to Commissioner Anderson, it could have come to the county judge, and you'd be the guy presenting it. And you'd be saying to the court, just as I think he is, whatever you all think is best for the people of the county, as far as this appraisal is concerned, you make that decision. I don't want you to feel necessarily there's a bias from me or a bias from Mr. Walker. But as you all know, I'm usually supportive of doing the thing that's most pragmatic, as long as you can accomplish the goal of taking care of the taxpayer. In this case, there's no clear guidance on what to do when you have a piece of dirt that's worth five bucks. Do you go spend $500 for an appraisal? I mean, if that's how you read it, black and white, if you're about strict construction, well, you're never going to sell that thing. I mean, you're just, you're going to go pay 500 bucks for an appraisal and then try to pass that on. Nobody's going to pay it. So you have to be reasonable here. But at the same time, I don't want the taxpayer, and I know you don't, the taxpayer to get shorted on this.
Sure, thank you.
You said something about the appraisal, that the Grimes County appraisal district, the value of it that they have, you say we must obtain.
Well, the provision that Mr. Walker's given you under the, it's in attachment 12, I think. It's the bold part of section B. The fair market value is determined by an appraisal obtained by the political subdivision that owns the land or interests. I think it's, in my mind, it's gray enough that you can interpret it how you choose. But I don't want there to be any, and there's always a chance, but I don't want there to be a significant chance that folks are going to accuse you of having sold something for less than what it was worth. And that's, that's the point here. You need to make yourself comfortable that you sold it for at least what it was worth, if not more.
Does that rule out a Realtor's opinion?
It doesn't say certified appraisal, doesn't say professional appraisal, doesn't say who's qualified to perform that appraisal. Do you have to hire an appraiser to do it? Can you get, can you get Harry to do it? I mean, I don't know, it doesn't say. I mean, I think we can, we, we understand what appraisal usually means. When someone uses the term appraisal, it usually means from a certified, from somebody who's a licensed appraiser. But it doesn't say that. And there's no definition of it that I'm aware of. No definition in this particular section.
If there are no further questions for anybody, is there anyone prepared to make a motion?
I move that we authorize the sale of the county property on Fenthorpe Street and use the appraisal from the appraisal board and authorize the county judge to signature.
Second.
There is a motion before the court on agenda item number 12 by Commissioner Dobianski. There is a second by Commissioner Mallett. Is there further discussion? Questions or concerns? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Mr. Walker, number 13, considering take action on a waterline permit request by Wixon Creek SUD for an installation on John Rice Drive, and that's our attachment number 13.
This is another water service line extension. You just approved one on John Rice at the last port session. This is the next property down the block. They were not able to coordinate the waters and everything, so now that's a requirement. So a little confusion. It's just a single service for individual residents. It's a small network line, there's not an opportunity for fire management.
Yeah, that's a two-inch line and they have to have a four-inch or more for a water, for hiking?
Typically, you're looking for an eight-inch line.
Eight-inch.
There's circumstances where you can go with this.
Six is four, yeah.
The house service won't do it.
There's no discussion. I move to approve the waterline permit request by Wixon Creek SUD on John Rice Drive.
Second motion.
There is a motion before the court on agenda item number 13 by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. There's no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Road and Bridge, report, sir.
The crews are busy with our chip sealing program now. We've completed the first course, Pat Mark and Gobert. The crews are working this morning on Racy Road. She'd have that finished today, again, for the course. Then we can put it back and do 344. We've got a couple of other neighborhoods that are being prepared while this is going on. So a lot of activity. It takes basically all in one crew and a few people and piece of equipment off the other crew to do this. So it's pretty intensive. But we're making good progress. The rain earlier this week didn't hurt us, didn't slow us down, so we're in good shape there.
About how much can they lay in a day?
Racy, Racy is 11,500 feet and they're comfortable they can get it done today if we don't have an equipment problem or anything.
Over 10 miles.
Once the preparation work is done, it goes fast. Drive, we can oil distributor down, down the road. There's a chip spreader that's specifically made for this process. They can do the whole length of the road at one pass. The time-consuming part is they can come back and do the driveways and the intersections and things, sort of piecemeal work. The preparation is the slow part. Once you've got the ditches in shape and you've got the base on the road, the actual servicing goes quicker. So minimal inconvenience for traffic out there. Elsewhere, we had a few trees to clean up after the storms over the weekend. Judge had personal experience with that.
Did indeed. And I commend Road and Bridge for the quick response.
The drainage crew is an integral part of the chip sealing project. They are currently preparing ditches in the Carlton Speed Ranch neighborhood. They should be finished up with that this week. Be coming back over there to start putting base material on those roads next week. The side ditcher continues to chug along. They're up to over 233 miles so far this year, doing really well. One of the few things, it doesn't get sidetracked by the chip sealing. One guy, one piece of equipment, he just goes out there and does the thing. And as I mentioned earlier, we did meet with the functional Troy construction and went through the roads and then just subject to the road use agreement. Spent about half a day going through all that with them. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Were we able to, doing the side grooming of the roads? We had, you know, we had a public comment, I think, meeting before last.
We, we have not been into that area, that specific area yet.
Yes, sir.
There's some issues there. Those are extremely narrow rightways. And we've asked for some help from some of the residents to make us, make it where we can get in and work.
Okay.
We're still discussing that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That'll bring us to agenda item number 14. Commissioner Walker, review and take action to appoint Catherine Lee to the Brazos Valley Council of Governments Solid Waste Advisory Board to replace Marissa Hill as a representative for Grimes County.
Well, with the exit of our former solid waste advisor, I mean, solid waste director, Marissa Hill, that left us without a second representative on the board for the Brazos Valley Council of Government Solid Waste Advisory Board. And Ms. Lee is the person who would be replacing her on that board so we can have representation. So that's, it's just simple, we have to do it here. And then the board will then approve her and then she'll stop.
Once I get the minutes, sure, okay. So you want to make a motion to that effect?
Yes, I made the motion that we appoint Catherine Lee to the Brazos Valley Council of Government Solid Waste Advisory Board to replace Marissa Hill as a representative for Grimes County.
Is there a second?
No, second.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 14 by Commissioner Walker, second by Commissioner Cox. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations, Cap. Another assignment. But thank you for all you do. Number 15, considering take action to approve the interlocal agreement for fire protection services between the city of Navasota and Grimes- for fire protection services between the city of Navasota and Grimes County and authorize the county judge's signatory. That would be our attachment number 15. Commissioner Walker, that's in your precinct, I believe.
Yes, sir. We have the chief here, if you'd like to come up, I invite you up to speak to the interlocal agreement. And this is, go ahead.
This is the same.
Would you identify yourself for the court for those that might not know you?
Jason Kipowski, Chief, Navasota Park. This is the same agreement that we've worked through for the last several years. Glad to answer your questions.
And this effective date is starting October 1st, 2018, and shall remain in effect until September 30th, 2019. Nothing has changed. Did you get a chance to look at it?
I did. If you want me to comment, I will.
Yes, sir.
Because I know there were lots of members of the court that weren't here when this reasoning went down, and
Went down.
You don't, yeah, obviously went down, but I was thinking of that. And I like the way it's just on some agendas, you're buried, you know, it's not, I didn't have to do it to be F D's. Statutorily, you're not required to provide fire protection for your citizens. One would think that if you're going to, when you reach a certain threshold, one would think that that would be something that you would want to do, that you would feel obligated to do, whether or not you're legally obligated to do it. It seems to me when you're considering law enforcement, or fire protection, or ambulance, those are basic things. And of course, it affects people's insurance, if they don't have fire protection. There, statutorily, though, you're permitted to provide fire protection through the use of volunteer fire departments, and that's what you've chosen to do. We've had this discussion multiple times, that when that bill gets to be too high, you may have to consider creating your own department. I don't know that we're there, but at some point, that may occur. One would think that it would occur. The city of Navasota indicated to the county some years ago that they were providing fire protection outside the corporate limits of the city, and that that was not their obligation, and that the county was not providing them any compensation. And I know that nobody cares to rehash it, but it came to the point that the city indicated that they were prepared to stop providing fire protection outside the city limits if the county wasn't willing to pay for the protection that was being provided. As I understand it, a lot of it, not, not all of it, a lot of it involves crashes that occur outside the city. I know that there've got to be some structural fires that the city's called upon, but lots of times when you're dealing with roads in the counties, you're probably talking about, at least their big engine, and then whatever the number is, can't probably get down some of the roads that we have. So it's not that they're on every call, it is that they are on calls that are close to the city. It is that it provides a benefit to the citizens. In all likelihood, it reduces folks' insurance rates, because they're able to obtain a, whatever that ISO, or whatever that number is, I don't know what that thing's called. But anyway, so all to say, the, it began, it began a process at that point of trying to come up with the number that the city would ask the county to pay. The number you see in front of you wasn't the first number, it was thrown out. It was based upon a percentage, I think they totaled the number of calls they had outside city limits. They said, what is that as a percentage of the calls that we're making, and then what is our budget? And I think their number came from multiplying that percentage times their budget. I had concerns, of course, that you don't have any control over their budget. You know, if they decide, and it's not beating up on anybody, it's just an exaggerated example, so please take it that way. If they decide they want to get a helicopter, does that mean that the county's in for a percentage of a helicopter? So the, the question was, should it be a number that's determined simply by doing a percentage of their budget, when you have absolutely no control over what their budget is? And so there began this discussion, I'll call it discussions, about what to do, and somehow, some way, we landed on this number of 93,000 and some change. This, the agreement, the terms of the agreement, other than the number, are not all that significant, I don't think, or shouldn't be all that significant to you, is they'll continue to provide fire protection and show up for crashes and whatnot that are outside the city, the corporate limits. If you found, if, if you were to discover in any given year, the city quit doing that, and the city was only operating within its municipal boundaries, well, then you may really want to think hard about whether you're going to re-up this agreement. I don't think that's the case. I think they continue to provide the same service that they, they were before, and that they have for the last few years. I wanted you to have that insight, not to say to you that this is the time to necessarily change this, but you need to know how we got here. It's the same way, you know, how we started having commissioners' court meetings on Tuesdays, and nobody remembered that it was because Bill Pennley was having his dialysis on Mondays. I mean, that's how we got there. And Bill Pennley wasn't commissioner for years and years. Now we're on Wednesdays, so it's irrelevant, to be honest. But the point being is, I wanted you to have the details, so that you can decide whether this is a good deal to continue to do. I think they continue to provide a benefit to the citizens and people traveling through the Grimes County. I'll shut up now.
All right, I think it was provided ahead of time. Did you have any questions for Chief Kipowski?
Any amount in the agreement is the same as what we budgeted and provided last year.
If there are no further questions, then I'd like to make the motion that we approve the interlocal agreement for fire protection services between the city of Navasota and Grimes County and authorize the county judge's signatory.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 15 by Commissioner Walker. There's a second by Commissioner Cox. There's no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you. Agenda item number 16, County Judge Joe Fow, considering take action regarding the burn ban and authorize the county judge's signatory. I see no reason to impose the burn ban at this time.
We can get pretty good steady rains.
Hasn't been at this, all over the county at the same time, but I think for most of the county.
I looked at the most recent report from the Texas Forest Service. Our threat level is pretty low.
Right.
Most of the area that's in high risk is in the Panhandle or northwest of where we're at. For now, I think we're okay.
So we'll, we'll take no action on item 16. Number 17, receive any updates on the strategic plan. We had the one with the animal shelter this morning, and I was glad to hear, even though it's a slow-moving process, I'm glad the process is still moving. Commissioners, do y'all have any updates on any of the other projects? And I know we've been kind of focused on budget of late, but.
We're still meeting monthly with the EMS committee, and we are now looking, one of the agenda items is we're looking at the various fire districts and seeing and mapping out where those calls are coming from, where the most calls are coming from, in an effort to provide the best response time as far as the location of our ambulances in Grimes County.
Thank you. Any other updates or comments? Seeing none, we'll go to agenda item number 18. Review and discuss and take possible action on changes to the sheriff's and constable's fee schedules for 2019. Compliance by law, no later than October 15, 2018. I got a email, and as a result of that email, I put this on the agenda, because I understand that the sheriff's office and the constables, and even the justices of the peace, I believe, set their fee schedules. Is that correct, Judge Cor?
The state pretty much set what we're supposed to.
For the JPs, okay. But we have to review the data that we currently have on file with the state. We then have to submit the data, or confirm what we have is good. But that was not my call to make, so I put it on the agenda for discussion. I don't know how it's been done in the past. Have y'all reviewed this in the past? Sir.
Somehow it falls to my responsibility to report to the state if there are any fee changes.
Yes, sir.
And yes, it, it has always been reviewed by the commissioners' court.
Do the commi-
This may be the earliest.
Sir.
Usually it's a little bit later. I think it's due October the 1st.
It is. Well, I found as fast as things move in government, the earlier we start, the closer to the deadline we'll make it. I'm not saying anything other than an observation. I did send a copy of the information, Chief, to the sheriff's office. I know he's on vacation, so I don't know if it comes, has gotten down to you yet.
No, it hasn't, I haven't seen it yet. But typically, we make notes.
Okay.
And typically, one or more of the constables will appear and say, we're going to keep the fee the same. But these fees are typically fees that are charged by the constable. If you, if you have a county that's not a constable, the duty falls on the sheriff.
Right.
In some counties, the sheriff does it. But for instance, if you file a lawsuit, and you need to serve the other side, you're typically going to pay 100 bucks to the constable to go out and do that.
Right.
On a yearly basis, they examine whether that's the appropriate fee. If they're given authority to increase it, then they can ask the court to consider increasing that fee. I think that's where we are. I haven't heard anything from the constables, I don't know. But they oftentimes, I remember I think Blake came, Constable Jarvis came last time and said, we're asking to keep the fees the same, so I don't know what their position is.
I think I copied them on the email that I sent to the sheriff, although I would have to double-check that. And if I haven't sent them, that I will, so they're on alert. But then we just wait from, probably from them to say we're raising them, or we're maintaining.
I think you would want to take their recommendation. Yet what, what you're competing with, just to be clear, is there are private process servers, and if you can find somebody, a private process server to do it, for much cheaper, then the county potentially loses out on that income. And so in my mind, I think the constables are in a better position to tell you whether the number's right or wrong, and whether it needs to be an increase.
Very good.
From your standpoint, you probably want the increased revenue, but you don't know what the competition looks like out there, and you don't know what the numbers look like. And so I suspect you'd want that information.
Okay. Thank you for that input. So I would then say, based on what we've heard this morning, we'll table this for the time being. I'll make sure that I have forwarded that email to the constables and pursue their input. And Mr. Paskett, this is a matter of making sure we get it all done. Kind of bird dog me, if you will, to make sure we're moving that process and we make, we beat the deadline. Okay, sir? Thank you. Well, for our viewing audience, I'm sad to say that brings us to the end of our agenda, except for one additional item. Is there a motion?
I move to adjourn.
I second.
There's a motion before the court for agenda item number 19 to adjourn by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Walker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.